Good morning, everyone. This regular meeting of the Mobile County Commission is now called to order. This morning, we have with us Pastor Marvin Charles Lou, Jr., from Stewart Memorial CME Church on Martin Luther King Avenue in Mobile. Pastor Lou, if you will come forward, we will stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
Blessings in favor to the citizens of Mobile County, to you, Madam President Hudson, Commissioner Ludgood, Commissioner Dewitt. We give God praise for your service. On this day, our God, thank you. The beginning of a new week, the beginning of new opportunities, the beginning of renewed hope, beginning of renewed power. We pray now that you will give us the tools that are necessary to achieve the dreams of unity, progress, and purpose for all of the citizens that call Mobile County home, whether they are on the I-10 corridor or going up I-65. Allow them to know that we are one county, we are one people, and we are one purpose, and that is to be the best citizens that you've created us to be. We speak a spirit of respect, we speak a spirit of understanding, we speak a spirit of clarity in this gathering today, and give those who have been chosen to lead us the insight and wisdom to make decisions that not only impact their particular communities, but do Mobile County well as a whole. We believe it done in the spirit of your Son, the one who gave the ultimate sacrifice so that we may have life and life more abundantly. And the believers in that God said, "Amen."
Thank you for being with us, Pastor Lou. Okay, this morning, we have a resolution, a special presentation, and then we are going to invite some of our retirees up to accept their certificates. And so this morning, first of all, I'd like to invite Tim Jordan, Tom Waters, and Paul Antwine to join us. And Commissioners, we have a resolution in honor, a recognition of Building Safety Month, and these gentlemen are the unsung heroes of building inspections. So we take it for granted a little bit, I think, when we go into a building, that we're going to be safe because it's been inspected and you guys have done your job. But it's a very, very important job, and it gives us the peace of mind that the buildings and the owners, you know, and whomever owns the property, the property owners, that their property is being taken well care of and inspected, and that they don't have anything to worry about. So it's important, and we want to recognize this month and the outstanding work that you do. The resolution reads, "Whereas our county is committed to recognizing that our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens, both in everyday life and in times of disaster. And whereas our confidence in the resilience of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, tradespeople, design professionals, laborers, plumbers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. Whereas our nation benefits economically and technologically from using the international codes that are developed by a national voluntary consensus codes and standards developing organization, our government is able to avoid the high cost and complexity of developing and maintaining these codes, which are the most widely adopted building safety and fire prevention codes in the world. These modern building codes include safeguards to protect the public from hazards such as hurricanes, snowstorms, tornadoes, wildland fires, floods, and earthquakes. And whereas Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council to remind the public about the critical role of our community's largely unknown protectors of public safety, our local code officials who assure us of safe, sustainable, energy-efficient, and livable buildings that are essential to America's prosperity. And whereas "Safety for All: Building Codes in Action", the theme for Building Safety Month 2022, encourages all Americans to raise awareness about the importance of safe and resilient construction, fire prevention, disaster mitigation, energy conservation, water safety. And be it resolved that the Mobile County Commission does hereby proclaim May 2022 as Building Safety Month in Mobile County, Alabama. Furthermore, we urge all citizens to consider the commitment to improve building safety, resilience, and economic investment at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies in protecting lives and property." And it is signed by all three Commissioners, and I'll present that to you. Did you want to make a comment or two?
Sorry, I don't take up too much time. You did a great job reading that, I was hoping that you were going to take care of that, not me today, so thank you for doing that. I thank the Commission for allowing us to come up here and do this. Me and Paul both serve on multi-laws throughout the state and volunteer to, we believe it makes a difference. But I'll share something real quick. We have a colleague, a vice president, soon to be president of the ICC, International Code Council. He took a direct hit last year with Hurricane Ida, and some of those winds were up to 170, 72 miles an hour. His house was just built by the adopted code at that time, and houses around him were torn off the foundation and, you know, lost flood and everything else. So when you hear these stories, you know that it makes a difference when it happens to somebody close to you or something, so I do believe that. And just wanted to say, none of this happens without the support of the Commission and the team that we have in Mobile County Inspections. But the leadership, I believe, is second to none. I'll start with Mr. Ricky Mitchell, that visits our office regular and supports everything we do with a smile on his face. Our engineering manager, Matthew Barcliff, can't say enough about him. I believe every time he comes to our office, he makes us smarter. I really believe that. Love you, Matthew. And our director, Tom Waters. When you hear people say that sometimes people put others before themselves, you won't find anybody else that does it better than Tom. He supports us, treats us as professionals, and gives us the tools we need, and really respects family. And I think that's kind of what, why me and Paul serve and do what we do is because of leadership that supports us and takes care of us. And you can't find that too many places in today's job workplace. So just want to thank y'all for what y'all do.
Well said, Tim.
We would next like to recognize Ms. Jakayla Armstrong. Good morning. So Eagle Scout Jakayla Armstrong is the first African-American female Eagle Scout in the state of Alabama. She's a 2022 graduate of Murphy High School, Old Panthers, and was cheerleader and a homecoming queen. Is that right? Did I get that? So today, we have this certificate of reward to certify that Jakayla Armstrong has earned special recognition and is hereby granted this certificate of reward for earning the rank of Eagle Scout and the first African-American female Eagle Scout in the state of Alabama. And it's done this 23rd day of May 2022, and is signed by all three Commissioners, Commissioner Hudson, who's our president, Commissioner Dewitt, who's behind you, and yours truly. Congratulations, and thank you. You make us proud.
First off, I would like to thank the whole Commissioner Board for this opportunity. My name's Jakayla, and I'm a member of Troop 283 out of Liberty Missionary Baptist Church. As stated, I am a recent graduate of Murphy High School, and in the fall, I will be attending the University of Alabama. Thank you.
Okay, and while we're here, we're going to bring down our retirees for June 2022 who are with us today, and I will read the names. I'm not sure who's with us, but when I read your name, if you'll come on down, please. We have Tim White, who, after knowing Tim all these years, I realized his first name is actually Carrie. Okay, Tim has been, he has worked for the county for 15 years and one month. He's a construction contract administrator. Next, we have Blondie Williams, and she has 13 years of service. She's Office Assistant Two. We have James Hillman, 30 years and seven months, Engineering Tech Two, his department. Brenda Driscoll, her service is 25 years, 11 months. She's a Deputy Comptroller. And Ruby McCall, 19 years, Office Assistant Two. And Roxy Polden, 18 years and 10 months, a tax auditor. Well, I think we have one here. Roxy, come on down. Okay, we have, what is it, Ruby? Oh, Mary Stoudemire. Let's see, is Mary here? I think she was recognized at another meeting, but did not receive her certificate yet. There she is. Okay. Come on up. Good to see you. Ruby, good to have you. Okay, the Mobile County Commission will present the certificate to Ruby McCall. We wish to express our sincere thanks and gratitude for your 19 years of dedicated service. Your wisdom and commitment to excellence have long inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come. We wish you good health, happiness, and continued success in your retirement. Give her a round of applause. Okay. Eddie, I think we are ready to move forward with the agenda. Now, we have any speakers this morning, I guess I should ask that. Anybody sign us?
Good morning, Commissioners. Yes, the first speaker is Rhonda Gullidge.
Oh, Rhonda, okay. We know her.
If I have to give my address, I guess it's 205 Government Street. But I'm Rhonda Gullidge, and I just want to thank y'all for supporting the Alabama Kidney Foundation. Currently, there are 14,000 Alabamians on dialysis, and 1,000 of those are on the waitlist for a kidney. By designating on your driver's license that you are an organ donor, then if you're deceased, your organs can be harvested and given to people who are in need of organs. Six out of 10 people receive their kidneys from deceased donors. There's a five-year waitlist to get a kidney. The other four people that receive organs receive them from living donors. These numbers really didn't mean a lot to me until my best friend told me she needed a kidney. She had been on dialysis for 14 months, and in October of 2019, I gave her my left kidney. Kidneys from deceased donors last 10 to 15 years, but a kidney from a living donor can last 15 to 20 years. So I just want to thank y'all for supporting the Alabama Kidney Foundation and encourage everyone to be an organ donor. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Our next speaker is Angie Gudra.
I think we know her, too. Welcome this morning.
Good morning, y'all. We're here today to sort of give y'all an update of where Grand Farms Road West has had at this stage. I am very happy to say we are installing our mailboxes to be able to receive mail there again. So that's a big achievement, and thank y'all. We wanted to know when we would get speed limit signs. The road is drivable now, and it's a racetrack, but I'm not complaining.
Okay. Well, I think I'll turn to Brian Kegley. Do you know what the plans are in terms of getting speed limit signs up?
Commissioner, just as soon as we accept it for maintenance, we'll be installing speed limit signs.
Do you have a projection?
I'll have to get an update, Commissioner.
We can, he can...
It should be imminent.
It's in the inventory. Is there another step? It's in the maintenance inventory, but that was accepted earlier this year.
It's still on the contract. We haven't accepted it from the contractor yet, so as soon as we get final documentation, we do a final inspection, we'll take it into our inventory.
Right. Contractor has to release it before we can
Gotcha.
add any signs or do anything.
I'm learning. Also, is there a way, will there be like a marking to show where the private road starts and the county maintenance starts?
Yes, ma'am. We'll have an end of county maintenance sign installed also.
Thank you very much. Y'all have a wonderful day, and y'all come out there and see it. Y'all, this is awesome. By the way, Southern Land Development, that crew is awesome. Brian Kegley, you were right. They have been patient with ones that wasn't patient with them. They've just been really good. They're really good people, so thank y'all.
We're glad that it has all worked out very positively.
We'll go tomorrow.
Thank you. Do you have any more?
That concludes our speakers.
All right, now Eddie. Okay.
Number one. Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of May 9, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Two. Approve a list of claims.
So moved.
Second.
Three. Hold a public hearing so any citizen of the county shall be given the opportunity to be heard for or against any item related to the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in the fund balance report.
This public hearing is now in session. Is there anyone present to speak for or against this matter? There being none, the public hearing is now closed.
Four. Approve healthcare services agreement with C Sessorio Medical Consulting as a contract monitor for the MetroGel for the purpose of monitoring the healthcare contract of the current private vendor for the term July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2026.
So moved.
Second.
Five. Approve memorandum of understanding with Mobile Regional Center, Alabama Institute, for the deaf and blind for non-exclusive use of the parking lot at the Bay Hayes Building as a safe space in the event of an emergency, and also for drills at no cost.
So moved.
Second.
Six. Approve renewal of the professional services agreement with JGBAG relating to inspection services for the grants department for a third one-year term commencing June 1, 2022 and terminating May 31, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Seven. Authorize submitting subgrant application to Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for the Community Traffic Safety Program for the term October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2023 to fund the Southwest Regional Highway Safety Office in the total amount of $247,506.67 to be divided as follows.
So moved.
Second.
Eight. Authorize submitting subgrant application to ADECA for the continuation of the subgrant for the Selective Traffic Enforcement Program for the term October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2023 to fund the Southwest Regional Highway Safety Office in the amount of $544,000 with no local match.
So moved.
Second.
Nine. Authorize submitting subgrant application to ADECA for the continuation of the subgrant for the Hot Spot Impair Driving Enforcement for the term October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2023 to fund the Southwest Regional Highway Safety Office in the amount of $175,532 with no local match.
So moved.
Second.
Ten. Authorize submitting subgrant application to ADECA for the continuation of the subgrant for the Click It or Ticket Law Enforcement Campaign for the term May 22, 2023 through June 4, 2023 to fund the Southwest Regional Highway Safety Office in the amount of $43,017 with no local match.
So moved.
Second.
Number eleven. Authorize submitting subgrant application to ADECA for the continuation of the subgrant for the Drive Sober or Get Pulled Over Campaign for the term August 18, 2023 through September 4, 2023 to fund the Southwest Regional Highway Safety Office in the amount of $45,087 with no local match.
So moved.
Second.
Twelve. Approve amendment to the appropriation contract with Delta Resource Educational Center to extend period of performance, which was delayed as a result of COVID-19 pandemic.
So moved.
Second. I'm not sure that's the correct name for that entity.
Delta Resource Educational Center is not, is Foundation? Okay, can we make that correction, please? Delta Resource Educational Foundation? Thanks for pointing that out.
Number thirteen. Approve sponsorship agreement with Alabama Kidney Foundation in the amount of $2,500 to be divided as follows for its annual kidney walk.
So moved.
I'd like to amend that to add $1,250 for, oh, I already did it. Second.
And I, I don't think I was, I would not like, if it can be split any other way.
Would you have to include you?
Yes. Would it, is it the total of $2,500 or with another $1,250?
I'm sure they'd be pleased to receive it.
Yeah, if you don't mind, Eddie, add that I wasn't approached about this.
$1,250 from each district.
Yes, add $1,250 from my district funds.
I was kind of scared. I was about to add it for you.
Your district.
Add it from me and take it out of Commissioner Ludgood's district fund. Just kidding. Did we vote?
Second.
Fourteen. Authorize advertisement for, request for proposal for technical assistance and administrative services for the home program.
So moved.
Second.
Fifteen. Authorize closeout of the Equipment War and Fund Bank Account and the balance transfer to the general fund.
So moved.
Second.
Sixteen. Adopt resolution authorizing Mobile County Commission to fix the cost and establish a lien on the real property located at 4627 General Road, Mobile, Alabama, 36619, in the amount of $6,250 for the actual cost incurred for the demolition of the structure and removal of all debris from said real property.
Real quickly, I know we already discussed this, but I went by that property, and it looks really great. The neighbors are really pleased with, that had really just become an eyesore to the community. There were people living in a residential neighborhood who had turned it into basically a homeless camp with basically a chain link that's separating other residents from this. So it looks really great now, and hopefully it'll stay that way.
So moved.
Second.
Number seventeen, we're going to ask that you hold over. Number eighteen. Authorize advertisement for bids for revenue commission awning.
So moved.
Second.
Number nineteen. Award bid to Acre Construction Corporation for Grand Bay Senior Center Walking Trail for a total bid in the amount of $265,000.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty. Approve amendment number two with Watermark Design Group for Africa Town Historic Structures Restoration Scott Building. This amendment will revise the scope of work and increase the contract amount by $12,000. The new contract total will be $135,668.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-one. Approve change order number two with Jay Hunt Enterprises for new parking lot for Mobile Community Corrections Building. The change will decrease the contract by $8,793.40. The new contract total will be $556,914.60.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-two. Approve amendment number two to Mobile County Park Initiative contract with Goodwin Mills &amp; Kaywood dated August 6, 2021 to add Task Three Custom Playground Design Services for Chickasaw Bog Park.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-three. Authorize acceptance of a grant award and sub-recipient agreement from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources for the Bilabatory Water Distribution System upgrades project in the amount of $5,364,448 with no match required, and authorize Commission President to execute all associated documents.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-four. Approve appropriation contract with United Methodist Inner City Mission in the amount of $7,500 from District One funds for its after-school tutorial and summer enrichment program at Taylor Park Community Center.
So moved.
Second.
Twenty-five. Adopt resolution authorizing joint purchases agreements with City of Creola, Town of Dauphin Island, Town of Mount Vernon, City of Pritchard, City of Satsuma... Town of Dauphin Island, Town of Mount Vernon, City of Pritchard, City of Satsuma, and City of Sims for purchases from the county's annual bids. So moved.
Second.
Twenty-six, approve joint purchasing agreements with City of Creola, Town of Dauphin Island, Town of Mount Vernon, City of Pritchard, City of Satsuma, and City of Sims for the purchase of certain materials and supplies during the fiscal year 2023. So moved.
Second.
Number 27 and 28 were voted at the conference. Twenty-nine, approve recommendation of the Board of Review for the Junk Ordinance Hearing held on May 10, 2022 for the citation as follows, Citation 5709 dismissed. So moved.
Second.
Number 30, consider taking the following action on bids. So moved.
Second.
Thirty-one, adopt sole source resolution approving renewal of software maintenance contract with Environmental Systems Research Institute for ARTGIS Desktop Services in the amount of $52,620 for the period August 1, 2022 through July 31, 2023 for the revenue commission. So moved.
Second.
Thirty-two, approve professional consulting services contract, contract with hotel and leisure advisors in the amount of $30,000 from District 2 funds for the proposed development of an outdoor water park to be located at Mobile County Sportsplex plus an additional $30,000 upon successful negotiation of a developer for the, for the project, subject to final legal approval. So moved.
Second.
Thirty-three, adopt resolution approving a 2.5% merit increase effective June 25, 2022 for employees who meet the following criteria. So moved.
Second.
Thirty-four, accept maintenance of a five-foot strip of dedicated right-of-way on the north line of Lot 5 and the south line of Kelly Road dedicated by Platte for Anthony subdivision. This area will be utilized for Kelly Road gray-drained basin paved. So moved.
Second.
Thirty-five, accept maintenance of a 10-foot strip of dedicated right-of-way along the south line of Lots 5, 6, 7, and 8 and the north line of Kelly Road dedicated by Platte for Heller Estates. This area will be utilized for Kelly Road gray-drained basin paved. So moved.
Second.
Thirty-six, accept maintenance of a 10-foot strip of dedicated right-of-way along the south line of Lot 1 and a portion of Lot 2 and also a 30-foot strip along the portion of Lot 2 dedicated by Platte for Denham Acres. This area will be utilized for Kelly Road gray-drained basin paved. So moved.
Second.
Thirty-seven, approve right-of-way indoor easement agreement for Track 13 in the amount of $1,425 for Holly Point Drive South gray-drained basin paved. So moved.
Second.
Thirty-eight, approve right-of-way indoor easement agreement for Tracks 2 and 3 in the total amount of $25,950 for Weaver Road East gray-drained basin paved. So moved.
Second.
Thirty-nine, approve right-of-way indoor easement agreement for Track 4 in the amount of $2,570 for Warren Street Bridge Structure Replacement. So moved.
Second. This is the one in Whistler, right? Okay. All right, thank you.
Forty, approve preliminary plat only of Valor Ridge Subdivision. This is a private road subdivision and the roads within the subdivision will not be accepted by Mobile County for maintenance. So moved.
Second.
Forty-one, approve preliminary and final plat of replat of Lots 1 and 2, 7513 Old Shell Road Place, and approve preliminary and final plat of H and E Freeland Subdivision. So moved.
Second.
Forty-two, authorize acquisition of property and acceptance of right-of-way deeds and/or easements from the following property owners for the following projects. So moved.
Second.
Forty-three was voted at conference. Forty-four is add-on number one. Adopt resolution authorizing the permanent relocation of the polling site for precinct number 64 from Tree of Life Christian Church, 4548 Halls Mill Road, Mobile, Alabama, 36693 to Covenant Academy, 4568 Halls Mill Road, Mobile, Alabama, 36693, as Tree of Life Christian Church has been damaged by a truck and is rendered unsafe for use.
I have a question on that. What, was, was there time to do any kind of mailouts for the voters?
I think all that, I think all that was done. It just didn't get to y'all's attention till.
Well, I know there was some discussion, so I didn't know.
Yeah, my understanding is that there were, those affected were notified. Is that right, Mark?
I can answer, I can answer that.
Okay.
The actual.
Darren, I hear Darren.
Where's Darren?
The actual, I'm here.
There he is.
The actual mailouts did go. We received notice on May 9 at 2:22, which was the actual day of the commission meeting. So that's, our next meeting is actually today. But the following day, Judge Davis did send out notifications to those individuals that were affected.
Okay. Well, I realize this was very, very, it was basically critical in timing. It was last minute. I can't imagine how difficult that must have been, but, but I'm glad at least they were all notified. Thank you.
So moved.
Second.
Add-on number two is authorize submission of a request to Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Restore Program for a monetary amendment for Mount Vernon Water Treatment Plant upgrades and obligate up to $1,500,000 to the same from Commission District 1 American Rescue Act Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. So moved.
Second.
Commission announcements and/or comments?
I have an announcement. Today, we're, I'm announcing the art contest winners for the Earth Day Art Contest Program that was sponsored by the county. The theme for the, the art contest was "We Should Invest in Our Planet Because," and this was open to school age all the way through, was it high, or middle, high school? That's right. We do have some high school winners on here. The elementary winners for, third place was Cory Bell Penn from Old Shell Road Elementary School in the second grade. Second place was Bella Sky Sage at ER Dixon Elementary School, fifth grade, age 11. And first place was, and this is the elementary school division, first place, Marie Kaleli, Ishel Mertz Magnet School, third grade, age 9. In the middle school division, third place was Diana Din, Clark Shaw Magnet School, eighth grade, age 14. Second place, Ava Millwood, Phillips Preparatory School in the sixth grade. And, and first place, Israel Fox, Causey Middle School in the eighth grade, age 13. In the high school division, we had a first and second place winner. Second was Landon Seibert, Sarahland High School, a senior, age 17. And first place was Aiden Morris at Barton Academy, ninth grade, age 14. So congratulations to all the winners. I know they are in school right now, so we couldn't have them here today. We, we know they would hate to miss school. So we're going to bring them back when, during summer break and actually present certificates to them. And, and I'm, and this is the first time that the county has sponsored an art contest for Earth Day, and I think it was a great success and something that we will probably continue to do. And, because it, it really is a good opportunity to engage young people. And, you know, to, as, as far as protecting the planet and appreciating the ecological, all, all the resources and the attributes, I, I think it's so good to be able to, to start at an early age to help young people understand the importance of protecting and preserving our planet. So anyway, kudos to our communications department. And Dina, I know this was her, her little, her project that she pulled together, and we, we appreciate all the hard work here. Anyway, I think that is it as far as announcements. We do have an indigent care board meeting immediately following, so we're ready to.
Request for motion to adjourn until June 13, 2022. So moved.
Second.
Okay, this meeting stands adjourned, and we are ready for indigent care. That meeting is now called to order.
Number one, approve minutes of the meeting of the April 21, 2022. So moved.
Second.
Two, accept report from the Mobile County Commission of the balance in the indigent care fund at April 30, 2022. Funds available, $155,972.41. So moved.
Second.
Three, approve request for motion to adjourn. So moved.
Second.